Alrighty, I guess we should get started. Item number one, the Kins Center loading zone, issue sheet. You want to speak to that one, Julie?
Sure. The Kinsmen would like the loading zone to be in front of their building on 324 Ross. And as you can see, the loading zone is to the left of the building and more or less in front of an empty lot. The access of the center is being used for long periods of time by people parking all day or all night in front of the center. This has become a problem for the seniors that wish to access the building as they have no place to park and/or having to walk a long distance. So there would be a financial implication regarding this issue because the signs would have to be moved. And it's recommended that the traffic bylaw be amended and move the loading zone signs to accommodate the Kins Center.
Okay, so do we have a policy that addresses loading zones?
It is on the bylaw, the traffic bylaw.
Traffic bylaw?
Yeah.
And is the issue the loading zone or is it that we're not enforcing the parking bylaw?
That's a good question.
I know when the Kinsmen came to see me, they had concerns with a neighboring tenant who was parking there all the time, even after they cleared the snow. And he has parking in the back. So, you know, we could create a loading zone, but we may still have a parking issue. So I wonder if we, and I do believe we have a policy as it relates to loading zones, I wonder if we should check the policy, check the parking bylaw, enforce a bylaw?
I think it's a little bit of both. When you look at it, the signs are kind of in the wrong place as far as being a loading zone for the Kinsmen Center.
But I don't think they were put there for the Kinsmen Center.
Okay.
Or were they put there more?
I'm guessing Stella's building, because they've been there a long time. So when Stella-
Stella's building?
The one right next door to it there, that rooming house? Because they've been there a long time, and I'll bet you if you go back far enough, you would find that Stella might have requested them way back in the day when she was busier. She's no longer there.
Well, what is, what was that building before?
It's a rooming house. Still is.
And she needed a loading zone for that before?
Well, we have a policy for apartment buildings and loading zones, so it probably qualifies.
So is that something to that? Or is there something on that?
Isn't the, correct me if I'm wrong, but isn't the loading zone area that's pointed out right in front of the fence?
Yes.
Yeah. Right there. It gets basically to the left of the Kins Center. They want it back? From here back here.
I just wonder why they'd have a loading zone in front of that area.
Again, way back in time?
Yeah, I guess.
So I would suggest that we probably review the policy, check our parking bylaw, enforce some bylaws, and come back with some recommendations.
Okay.
Everybody good with that?
Yep.
Good.
So just one question though for clarity for me. So are they saying that people are parked in the loading zones for a long period of time?
No, they said they're parking in front of the Kinsmen Center.
One at a time, guys, okay? One at a time. Go ahead, Audrey.
Yeah, like that, that's what I was trying to figure out, because I don't think they're saying that it's, I don't think it's saying that they're parked in the loading zone for long periods of time. Says the access of the center is being used for long periods of time by people all day and night. They're asking for us if they would like a new loading zone, no?
Yeah, generally when, I forget his name, when he come to see me, he indicated that the person who lives in this building is parking here all the time. Even after they clear the snow out, he parks there.
Oh, okay.
So they are suggesting that if they have the loading zone moved over, then he wouldn't park there. But that would still necessitate the Town of the Paw enforcing the parking bylaw and either ticketing or towing. Because there's nothing to prevent him now from parking in the loading zone.
And we still have to look at policy, because the policy could say for loading and unloading is 15, 20 minutes, I don't know what it says. And then what does it address for people parking long term? Is it a, if the bylaw enforcement officer decides to do it, how many, how many, even says how long they got parked there for?
Forty hours. One at a time, guys. Okay, so the recommendation is, am I good with that?
Yep.
Okay. Planning and development subdivision application.
Proposed subdivision approval lots two and three, Plan 6243 Centennial Drive North. This is on behalf of Manager of Housing in order to create a new law for residential purposes for the development of a 24-unit multifamily dwelling. MHRC will be working with a local developer. This subdivision will be in compliance with the new development plan that will be in place soon. Therefore, the planning branch has advised that an amendment to the current development plan is not required, and this subdivision can be considered. The planning branch circulated the application of subdivision to government departments and agencies for comment. No concerns or objections were received. The proposed subdivision is in compliance with the Town of the Paw development plan and zoning bylaw. The planning branch requires a resolution from council, either approving the proposed subdivision with or without conditions or rejecting it. In speaking with the engineering department, they advise that the lagoon can handle this, but we must stay on course in terms of pursuing lagoon upgrades and then water plant upgrades.
Any questions on the proposal? Trevor?
So I just wondering, so what are we, like in terms of like the infrastructure, like sidewalks, like all that kind of, what happens? Are we required to have certain things there for that proposal, or is it? Is that a few?
One at a time, please. Go ahead, Julie.
No, I was just going to say this, this is just to do with the approval for the subdivision, which is part of the process for a subdivision application to go through, is to be council approval.
I know, but I just in terms of, I'm not sure of all the infrastructure that's there. Like what are we on the, is there other things other than, I mean, obviously it's important to know about that, but other little things like, oh, fire hydrant, it's not going to be there, or a sidewalk on this side, or, I don't know, is there any other things that are, like are, because I'm assuming if we approve it and then someone builds it, then there's no, someone going to come back and say we need to, we need that stuff or no?
So are we, are we wondering if we have things like sewer and water and infrastructure to services? Is it onsite now, or is it something that we're going to have to add? Because I'm not familiar with this section of Centennial and where the sewer and water is, I don't know.
Yeah, because I, again, I don't think it, I don't think there is there.
Would that be covered in this, or would that be covered in the development agreement?
That would be in the development agreement.
Okay, so really, what we're deciding right now is if we're in favor of the subdivision, and then the development agreement addresses the other issues. Yeah. I'm asking that, it's for you.
Oh, you're asking me? Yes, that's right. Now, this is just for the-
Subdivision.
For the subdivision part of it.
Okay.
Yeah, and sitting down with a developer and having an agreement drawn up, that's something that would happen after, because they have to have this in place, you know, they have to have approval for the subdivision before they can-
First step.
Even, yeah, before they can even consider a development agreement.
Well, first there would have to be zoning, right? We'd have to do, we'd have to zone it, and then we'd have to, there's a variation required, we'd have to do the variation. So this is just basically setting aside this lot for, for this purpose, but it's not holding us, pigeonholing us to anything. Okay, so everybody good with bringing this forward?
Good.
Yep, everyone's good?
Does anybody know when this is?
Yes.
Where is it? Because I tried to figure it out, and I got totally lost.
Yeah.
Centennial?
Yeah.
Where's Duffer?
Okay, straight up, straight up, one down, one.
Yeah, right there.
Right there. You just passed on it, I think, right?
It's right in that curve. Duffer doesn't actually exist, it's just on the map. If you look at the map, there's Duffer, there's the curve, it's like right there.
So it's just past the UCN development?
Right, yeah, okay.
All right, okay. I kind of thought it was, but I wasn't.
And then that Centennial Avenue is actually the road that goes across to Grace Lake, right?
I think you're right, Joe.
Yeah.
Okay.
To Grace Lake Road.
Yeah.
To Grace Lake, like past the Ball Diamonds and that.
Yeah, yeah. No, that's Fairford.
That's right.
The next one over.
No. Oh, yeah, that one's over here, yes.
Yeah, right there, yeah.
Because this is Grace Lake here.
Correct.
Okay, so everybody's good with this subdivision going forward?
Yeah.
Did you have a question?
Sorry, yeah, just one more thing. And the resolution would state that there would be a condition that the site plan and the development agreement will be required before moving forward, so.
It's covered.
Yeah.
Cool. Tax incentive program, Councilor Ward.
A while ago, there was a thing on Facebook with the community of Winkler, and talking about their tax incentives in your community to develop businesses and stuff and everything else. And having read that and not being able to find our tax incentive program in our bylaws, I thought it'd be something worthy to bring forward as, in this case, this development and some of the other developments, the one that Trevor talked about with the Bell over there, that you should look at our tax incentive program. And the article on Winkler Jen has put in here about what it has done to their community. And then she put in the tax incentive bylaws for the Town of the Paw. And as you read them, and you come down to Part Three, types of tax incentive, single family residence, I'm not sure fully aware of how Winkler's is, but Winkler's goes 20% reduction per year for six years. Like it goes 100% first year, 80, 60, 40, 20, kind of like that. Ours is substantially higher. It's 75 first year, 75 second year, 50 third year, 54th year, 50, and 50 year. In commercial industrial, multi-residential, it's 75, 75, 50, 50, 50. So seeing this, we do have some pretty good tax incentives to go out there, although I'm not sure as, on the left-hand side, everybody tries to figure that out, that the increases and how you get, that maybe we should rearrange it differently, or, I don't know, it's just something I think that we have to put out to the community and have the community know that we do have tax incentives for the community, and publicize it in different areas so that we can get future development into our community.
Discussion, Carrie.
I believe that when a parcel of land is purchased, this is something that is given to people when they purchase their land. When, I guess five years ago, when I built my home, there was, this tax incentive was in place at the time, and after the second year, pardon me, the third year of tax, then you paid your full tax. And I'm pretty sure that this was presented to me when I came in and gave my deposit. Whether or not everybody reads the packages that they're given, like when, once the land is purchased, sometimes papers just kind of sort of go home and not read, but, yeah.
Do we know if this, is this still a valid bylaw?
I believe so.
It still is?
I believe so.
So really, it's a question of education to let the people know that we have it?
I wonder if it's on the website, perhaps?
It is.
It is? Okay.
It would also be worth reviewing. And I don't know if this would be something that we could send either to the planning branch, or maybe even the CDC, for the CDC to look at, to see if it's still adequate or not, I don't know. You know, there's a lot of different, I did a little bit of searching in every community, well, not every community, but every, every community I looked up had, had incentive bylaws. And they're all over the map. And maybe, you know, you look at Winkler's, it's quite a bit different than ours, you know, like, there's a lot of different ways of looking at this, and maybe we should have, maybe we should revisit and send it, send it out, have some other eyes have a look at it, or invite some people to comment on it, but, yeah. Because I don't see a lot of people beating down our doors to develop. Any other discussion, anyone? So-
Are our numbers, do you feel our numbers are good or whatever, like, like in, just in the single-family residential, like Carrie says, because the, of the, into the assessment amount of $1,000, $100,000, they got two years. Should that be expanded more? I don't know. Trevor?
No, sorry, Audrey was first.
Part of the work that the CDC is doing is they do have this on their radar right now to work with a developer to make sure, and I think Trevor may have mentioned it in the past, to make sure that these things sort of line up with what they're looking for. I believe it's really about having a customized incentive program that's, that's important for our community and not, you know, and kind of get the good stuff that everybody is having, but what works for us. So this is on the, this is on the work plan of your CDC right now. And so if you have additional information you want to share, like, please go and, you know, forward whatever you have onto us or Jackie or Trevor or myself, and we'll make sure it's in the loop.
Carrie?
Trying to figure out how to say it without breaking protocol, like in camera. So can you talk about something that we, like, about having a meeting that we talked about, or something? Okay, all right, I guess, yeah. I was just, basically, it's on the CDC, and there was, I can, I'll put up an issue sheet so that we talk about it in camera on a proposed future meeting to deal with something similar to this. But, question?
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, go ahead, yeah.
But as a, as a group, though, we could vote to put that on the agenda tonight in camera if we wanted to hear what Trevor had to say. We just have to all agree.
Okay. But it's nothing you want to talk about in an open meeting?
Well, yeah, I think, I think, like, I'm not, I guess this is where I don't know the rules, like, I'm not going to mention the persons, can I mention, like, that we, like, what can I mention from out of in camera? Can I even mention?
No, you can't.
Okay, so then I, for the sake of being Drake and Protocol, yeah, we're all agreed to put it on the agenda, free of camera, I can talk about it for five minutes.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I missed the last meeting, and I have no idea what you talked about.
I know, and it's not, and it's not like it's something this big old thing, it's not, it's just so minor, that's why I'm kind of like, saying, can I just say it? But anyway, if we can slowly figure-
All right, so anyways, so back to the discussion at hand. We believe that the tax incentive bylaw is a good bylaw, and we feel that we should market it as such?
Yes.
And maybe get it a little more prominent on our webpage or something? Okay?
But-
Yeah, sorry.
Before marketing, and I think we should revisit it and possibly look at making some changes to it.
What changes would you suggest, Larry?
The years, possibly some of the amounts, things like that, to create more incentive for people, both commercial and residential, to develop in this area. Because, I mean, we all know that we are lacking a lot of that, we need development. So possibly if we can adjust some of these incentives, we can promote more development in the area. And I don't think it would be wise to publicize this if there's a possibility that we can make changes to it.
Okay, so just a couple of questions, just because I'm thinking all out. So this is a tool, right? So what are we hoping to achieve with this tool? Some growth?
Yes.
So how many vacant residential lots do we have right now?
Minimum, right?
I'm guessing there's 10 or 12?
Vacant in the Town of the Paw?
Yeah.
Like vacant as-
Vacant is ready to go to be built on right now.
They're sold?
No, no, like in the Town of the Paw, are there, there are?
30, 40. Drive around, there's a lot of houses, there are auto lots that have a house on, you know what I mean?
But we don't own them.
No, no, and I'm not saying we own them, but we don't need to own them. Because somebody needs to own them, and somebody needs to build a house on them. If somebody does own them, and they see a better incentive tax and put a building on that property, maybe we can entice people to start building something. And not just in the residential, but as well as in the commercial industrial.
So would it be worthwhile to send the owners of those vacant properties a copy of this bylaw, informing them?
I don't think it would hurt, yeah. It can hurt.
Audrey, you?
Yeah, well, I was just going to mention, I think we talked about it a few months ago now, I mean, we're waiting for Kelsey Planning District to come forward with that consolidated bylaw, or whatever, the planning package that would have that information in there. I think as Bill found in his search, it's not very easy to find anything on the, on the website, and even in all that, when you're looking for all these bylaws. And if we had one area where the document was all together, like I believe that we talked about coming from Kelsey Planning District, it would be a lot more helpful, because you can point people to that. So again, this is something that is on CDC's agenda and radar to, to make sure that we're doing those types of things. And it was a good question, Mr. Mayor, about the vacant lots, because we're not really sure what there's there too, so it's hard to, hard to go out and sell if we don't have the actual inventory.
Okay, so does that give you any direction, Julie?
Yes, we said yes.
We're in agreement, yes, we want to.
Want to do multiple things.
We want to do things. We want some to build.
Yeah, I've got some.
Okay, you're good, Bill?
Yep, no, fine, I just wanted to bring everybody to mention it.
Okay. Finance at Mid Recycling Center, issue sheet from the CAO. Councilor Forster doesn't wish to be on the recycling center any longer? Would there be somebody else interested? Discussion.
Can we pick and choose what we're going to sit on?
Kind of, yeah. This isn't a prison sentence.
Or is it an open start we have?
Well, I know that I was asked, Carrie, why do you want to do this? And I just said that I would do it. It wasn't a matter of whether I wanted to or not. To me, it's just, this is, we work for Town of the Paw. There's different boards that we need to participate in, and I just, I guess I don't, I just don't understand.
Understand?
Why there, why, I guess why, somebody wouldn't want to participate?
Because there's a conflict.
Fair, that's, that's a reason.
Okay, so on the recycling board right now, it's Councilor Zelinski. Okay, so I guess the question becomes, do we need two council reps on the recycling board?
We do.
Why?
Because when the recycling board was originally set up, it was set up that it requires two representatives from, from each representative community. So the, the recycling board is set up as, as a community board, but it includes two members from the Town of the Paw, two members from the RMO Kelsey, and two members from OCN. And it's, that's just the way it's set up in the bylaw, in their articles, I guess. So, and it has something to do with taxes as well, it's, but it's come up before, but, yeah. So we could ask the recycling board to, recycling center board to change their bylaws, but that would be a break. We do need to appoint some.
Councilor, get some.
So by two members of Town of the Paw, does that mean from this table, or can it be somebody outside this table who lives in Town of the Paw?
That's a good question.
Yeah, that's a really good question. I don't, I don't know what in, I don't know what that care for me, yeah.
Is, is there a time crunch to get this done? Like, do we need it immediately? Because if not, Carrie raised a good point, and maybe there would be somebody from the community interested in participating, and we can appoint them like we do to other boards. Could we-
As far as I'm aware, there's no time crunch on it, so.
So would anyone have any objection to researching that a wee bit?
I have one more question.
Sure.
I have the last question today.
Okay.
So by the recycling board not having two members from Town of the Paw on it right now, does that stop them from having meetings? Does it stop them from having a quorum in any way because there's not two people sitting?
No, we, we had a meeting in January. I was the only rep from the Town of the Paw. We had a quorum.
Okay, so we'll research your question, because it's a good one, and maybe there's somebody from the public that would like to get involved. Then you'll get back to us. Thank you. Procedures bylaw, issue sheets, four two.
Amendment and review of the procedures bylaw. At the January 27 Committee of the Whole Meeting, the committee discussed the need for issue sheets regarding agenda items. The committee's, committee's direction was to have this included in the procedures bylaw. This has been addressed in the attached revised bylaw. This is also the time for any changes that council would like to see. The recommendation is to make any necessary changes and give first reading to the bylaw at the next meeting.
Okay, it's always a good time to clean these up a bit. Trevor?
I brought up the issue, and I really don't care if we do issue sheets or not, I just want it the same for everybody. I was, it causes confusion, I'll call, get something on, and I have to do an issue sheet, and then I see other things on, there is no issue sheet. It does obviously make things, you know, you're not having an agenda that's yea long, because all of a sudden everyone thought of a thing or two they wanted to put on, and sometimes it takes a little bit of effort to put together an issue sheet. So obviously, you'd think it would be very important, you're just going to put something frivolous on there, but I just wanted to clarify it, because there have been things on that haven't been, and then I went through the time and effort to put an issue sheet on mine, and well, why couldn't I just, just say, put it on? So I just want to clarify that, I couldn't care less whether they're there or not, really, just as long as I have the opportunity to put something on the agenda.
Cool. I know when Jen and I were talking about the timelines, they were kind of confusing, because it stated 120 hours prior to the scheduled time of the regular meeting. So when we were chatting, that worked out to be like 6:00 PM on Wednesday, right? So that's where, you know, we should start with suggestion of noon on Wednesday and four Thursday, like the time, that's where the times have come from, because it's a little more clear than 120 hours. So that's where those came from. In our procedure of bylaw, there should be something, and I don't know if this is the place, you guys can chime in here, but we need to recognize, formalize, remember that Julie and the CAO is our only employee. We're all guilty of it, of calling department heads and talking to department heads and not going- and not going through the CAO's office. And that really needs to end. And I don't know if that's something that needs to be put in the procedural bylaw or where we would put that. Because it needs to, we need to formalize this, in my opinion.
It's in the municipal act.
So we ignore it?
Well, we should. I don't know what else to say. I guess we, I don't know how you formalize it more than municipal act. That's our guiding principles for everything that we do here. There's no ifs and buts. When it comes to municipal act, that's added to us by the procedural bylaw so.
Right, it states that the CAO is our employee. I understand that. But does it speak to the fact that we shouldn't be calling department heads directly?
No, I don't think that it does.
I don't think it does either. Trevor?
I guess I get this sometimes, sometimes, too much in my other job too. But it just comes down to whether we enforce what we already have anyway. So we could write it and put it in our procedural, but it's still not going to make a difference, right? So if someone does, then I guess then we have to figure out, let everybody know what the procedure is. If that happens, then whether we get the Personnel Committee or whoever might actually do it. Once it's done, once, then probably it won't happen again. And a bylaw needs to help with it. So it could be written anywhere. If people, if it's not going to be dealt with, then it doesn't really matter what's written down, right?
Okay, so I've been checking and reading, you know, and I haven't been able to find, and I haven't, there's a lot of bylaws. If someone could tell me where it's written that Julie is our only employee and that we're not to contact department heads, I'd appreciate that because I haven't been able to find it.
The only thing it anywhere says is that everything must go to the CAO from council to manager. It doesn't really say that, but it just says that the CAO is your only employee as council. So I guess it kind of takes into the fact that council goes to the CEO, CEO goes to the managers. And then in reverse, the managers go to the CEO to bring stuff to council. And that would just be like somewhat of a proper chain of command.
Right, so how do we formalize that, understanding? Oh, Julie, go ahead, please.
In your organizational bylaw.
Is that where it should be?
Yeah, you can put a section in there talking about CAO's responsibilities.
Okay, so then could we put that on an agenda in March to review?
Yeah.
Beautiful.
So I do have the organizational bylaw. So role of council, I guess the responsibility of developing and evaluating the policies and programs of the municipality. Ensure that the powers, duties, and functions of the municipality are properly carried out and carry out the powers, duties, and functions expressed given to council under the Act. So would you put a, and I don't disagree with you, but would you put, I don't know how you would write that into the role of a council or the general duties of its members? Because it...
You could have in there the general duties of the CAO, just to clarify. You know, you've clarified what councils are. You can clarify what the CAO's are, you know. I've seen it, I've seen it done before. Not many organizational bylaws are like that, but I have seen it where they've just made it clear, you know, what the CAO's responsibilities are.
Trevor?
She was first.
Oh, okay.
So if something is in our general governance, which is in the municipal act, we still want to have it in our bylaw as well, like our procedure bylaw?
Well, where does it say in the municipal act that councilors shouldn't call or can't call staff members?
Well, it's not specific in terms of making phone calls. But the way that I read it, I feel it's, well, I feel. It's specific in terms of the chain, the chain that you follow. So... I guess if, if people, how do I say it? I don't know. Fair enough, yeah.
Sure, stockholder in March.
Trevor?
No, I just think I agree with Julie with you. Just clarify the CEO role and put in there that basically you provide the direction for the managers because it is a blurred line. When you call up, are you calling up for information or are you calling up and giving them an actual task to go do? And then, and it does become confusing. And I know a lot of, sometimes people call and they might just be clarifying stuff, but then it turns into now the person's unhappy and we're now providing them some direction because we're unhappy with something. So it should be stated in our organizational that the CEO provides that direction. And if you have to put it in, not from council, like not from individual counselors on town halls or whatever we have to put it in, then yeah, sure.
Larry, did you have something?
Yeah, I'm a little bit confused on what's happening here. Are you not allowed to contact, say for instance, Chris or any of the heads of departments to ask questions?
No. No, you have to.
Not give direction, just to ask questions.
You asked Julie.
It says council deals with the organization through one employee, the chief administration officer. Any other course of action in the attempting to guide the work of the administration should help be tolerated.
That was on your form. I'm impressed.
Yep, I have time to read. Sorry.
Did you have any other questions, Larry?
And what it basically stems from.
Let's talk to him.
Leave it alone.
Phil?
What it basically ends up down to, it ends up being a... Have better communication. Communication is the key. If council goes to the CAO and asks for direction or whatever, or if the CEO comes to council asking for direction, it's, communication is the key. So therefore, if we as council become managers outside of the CEO, then everything gets construed. And what will happen is, is that the CAO will not be in contact with what's happening. And therefore, she can't give us answers back on certain things. So in my estimation, I would think that there has to be a chain of command. Council goes to the CEO, CEO goes to the managers, managers go to the CEO, CEO comes back to council. Therefore, everything is kept in a balance of communication. This is my take on it.
Okay, so the organizational bylaw, we can look at that one in March? Great. Oh, now back to the procedural one. Is there any other changes anybody would like to see? Other than the ones that are in red?
I have a question.
Yes, please.
In terms of the 15 minutes. So there's like a 15-minute grace period. I can't remember the exact wording with it. So does that mean then, if there hasn't been?
Are we talking about the meeting and quorum?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. So then, it talks about 15 minutes. So then if somebody hasn't sent regrets, would the meeting still start at 6:00 PM? Or do we need to wait till 6:15 for a meeting to start?
No, the meetings start at 6:00 PM as advertised. In the event that we don't have a quorum at 6:00 PM, we have until 6:15 PM for a quorum to arrive.
Okay, that's what, okay. Thank you.
Yep.
So in the procedure thing, we were just talking about the issue sheets, I guess. And it says in here, by noon on Wednesday before council and committee of the whole meetings, all items to be added to the agenda, to the agenda must be accompanied by, accompanied by an issue sheet. So we're going to stay with that, really nerd?
I'm fine. Wasn't anybody?
I'm fine.
I got in trouble at the beginning.
I know.
So I did.
You learned.
I was the one that got troubled twice. That was it.
I got one schedule.
Larry, you're okay with it? Yep. Yeah. So this policy, the bylaw, we're good with the changes? We'll send it forward for first reading? Yes, yes, sure. Okay, good. All right, 4.3, lakefront lots lockup stage.
Clarification on lockup stage regarding the lakefront lot agreements. The lakefront lot agreements state the following. No later than April 1st, 2020, two years from date of purchase agreement, the purchaser shall construct to lockup stage a dwelling, A, of new construction or new RTM, B, complying with Manitoba Building Code and the bylaws of the Town of the Paw, and C, with landscaping. The agreement does not define lockup stage, nor does the town zoning bylaw or the Manitoba Building Code. Google defines lockup stage as the stage of residential construction at which point the walls and doors are in place so the structure may be secured. In saying that, a lot owner has asked if a ready to move home is on the land, but the foundation hasn't been started or not on the foundation, would this be considered lockup stage? In speaking with the building inspector, his recommendation was that this would not be considered lockup stage as the RTM could still be moved from the property and would not be livable. However, it would be council's decision as there is no regulation or code for this.
If I may?
Sorry, I guess I interrupted myself from the conversation. Sorry, I stayed on it beforehand.
Charlie, I don't think it gets through, truthfully. Anyways, okay, it says call. So anyway, I can give you some guidance from a bank's perspective. I do an awful lot of these for the banks. And the bank would consider lockup stage, obviously, on the foundation, exterior complete, doors, windows, shingles, siding, soffit, fascia. That's lockup stage. That's how we advance money.
So how you set down, that kind of says what the lockup stage is.
That's what it is to the banks.
On a foundation.
On a foundation.
So the, so if you did a garage on a foundation, is that still meeting our requirements versus a, no, it has to be a dwelling with?
Yeah.
Okay, so we don't define it with a toilet or windows or like there's no?
For, with the banks, for instance, if you're building a home, there's various stages where the money is released. Lockup stage is considered sitting on the foundation, right? Siding on, shingle, soffit, fascia, doors, windows, can lock the door, right?
The interior doesn't have to be?
Interior doesn't have to be done. They don't require the sewer and water hookups at lockup. Oftentimes they're done, but they don't require.
The only thing, the reason why I brought it up was because I'm curious, are there people out there with basically a big garage and then, but there's nothing in it, but it's got maybe some siding fascia, but then this person wants to bring a house. It's there, but it's just not on the foundation yet. I don't know if we want to mix the two and just, I just, in terms of the actual, it's not on the foundation yet. And we can't, like, I don't know, is this coming forward because the person's going to be, like, they're not going to make it in time? I'm assuming this is?
But it's probably somebody has looked at.
Go ahead, Phil.
I actually didn't. I don't know about this situation.
Okay.
Just what I read on here. I'm sorry, I didn't, I wasn't told.
So in the building code, when you come to the thing called foundation, now there's many types of foundation. So if this is an RTM, da-da-da-da-da, and the person just plans to put in screw anchors, is that considered a foundation?
It's, the point is mute. When the person starts to build their home, they provide a set of plans.
Right.
So whatever the building inspector and he have agreed to, that's the plan.
Okay, good. No, that's fine.
Yep.
No, if that's, if that seems to be the rule from the lending agencies, I don't think we should do anything otherwise.
Trevor, any other questions? Larry?
No, I was just curious, is that a document she wants her she was?
I didn't see your hand, I'm sorry.
I had a question, but I...
Say it.
Well, I don't know. It may, it just may be just for the sake of talking at this point. Okay, so there needs, there needs to be a minimum square footage.
That's a separate issue.
Doesn't matter.
That's a separate issue.
Okay. Doesn't matter then.
So we're good with the general definition? The exterior needs to be complete, siding, soffit, fascia, shingles, windows, doors. Sitting on the foundation.
I agree.
Yep. Yep. Trevor?
I just, my only question is that have we already told people that they've met lockup stage and, but they're not?
I don't know.
So that, it was okay for us to agree to it, but then if we've got six places out there that are, yeah, well, they all got lockup stage, they said it was all good, but I think most of it.
So would it be worthwhile to proceed with the definition as presented? Get confirmation if anybody has been given approval who didn't meet the definition?
Yeah.
And then I guess we would end up grandfathering them.
Yeah.
It's okay?
Yep.
Want to yell at chat? All right, November financial reports.
Go ahead, please.
Attached is the November 2019 internal financial summary for council review and approval. And Graham has recommended approval of this financial statement as presented. He talked to him briefly today and he said there was no major issues that he needed to bring forward. And we won't know exactly how the year has panned out until the December financial statements are complete.
But it appears we're not coming in over budget.
So far.
So far. Any questions on the statement? Nope? Everybody's good? Okay. AMM Municipal Official Seminar.
The 2020 Municipal Official Seminar is April 15th and 16th in Brandon. This seminar is AMM's two-day event. That includes presentations, breakout sessions, and report on professional development matters for municipal officials and up to the minute policy issues. Early bird registration is open until March 9th and is $150. Five hotel rooms have been booked. We need to decide who wants to go in order to take advantage of the early bird registration.
And I know the day before is the Reeve and Mayor's session.
Yeah, that's the session.
Yep, day before. Anybody want to go?
I love you.
Bill? Larry?
Sure.
Larry? Carrie?
I like the lunch.
I believe so, but we have council set for, oh no, that says Easter Monday, April 13th. So we must, that's obviously not happening.
No, no. Okay, so resolution will come forward for five members of council. And we'll finalize the roster. All right, STARS shock trauma.
Support for STARS shock trauma air rescue service. The town received a attached letter from the CAO of St. Anne asking for support for STARS. Many Manitoba municipalities have committed their support being at least $1 per capita. If the town did this, it would be $5,369. And it says that STARS would like this to be an ongoing expense. And the Assistant CAO has recommended that we do not provide support as they do not service the town.
Nope. Gotcha. If they expanded it, it would be great. Everybody good with that?
Good.
4.7, Strategic Plan, Counselor Murphy.
I know we've been talking about it for a while and then I had a little bit of spare time on my hands one day and I was looking around that HR or People's First HR or something like that. And I guess it's a municipal service that's provided, I'm not sure the cost, but it's a lot of the, or there is services that is free of cost. And I thought we should probably throw it on the table here to say, you know, should we, we've got just under three years left now. And we've talked about, you know, trying to do it on our own. and we've talked about, you know, trying to do it on our own or maybe we should sit down and have a small workshop on that with staff to see where we want to go. And again, I just put it on the table for discussion.
Discussion?
Is this, no, I don't know. Is this something that we should bring forward or that the CAO should bring forward to council?
That's a valid question. That's a good question. Like I don't disagree.
No, me neither. I know. It's just that are we becoming the managers again instead of being? I don't know. What do you think?
Well, I guess in fairness to Julie right now, I don't disagree. I would like us to have a resolution of the CAO position. Because if we're going to have a strategic plan, it'll be the CAO's job to implement it. Right? And at this point in time, there's, that still hasn't been settled. So I think it's good, but I'm not quite sure now is the right time. Once we get the CAO position settled, I think that's something we should definitely be revisiting the discussion on.
And it's required. It is required. It's just how it's done, I guess.
Go ahead, Andre.
Yeah, my thought is it was more around the lines that, you know, we have an Assistant CAO that's going to be here for a while and that it doesn't have to be a very big elaborate plan, but really just sit down some goals for the next three years on kind of where we want to be so that, you know, we seem something that we're working towards. And then also with the Assistant CAO that's there while we're in the search, will also provide some clearer direction for management and for staff to know which way administration's going in. And keep in mind that with any strategic plan, a three-year strategic plan is pretty, it's a great stretch, but if we can get it for a year, that's good. So it would be evaluated or it should be evaluated annually anyways to change direction. So I kind of just thought it was something for us as a group to work with our administration. And I don't know if it requires a CAO to be here. My opinion, I wouldn't wait for that because if it takes us two years to do that, I would hate to say we were waiting around for two years.
Yeah, again, I don't think we're going to be waiting around, truthfully. You know, right now on our priorities, without question, our number one and two priorities right now are the lagoon and dump. That's number one and two, and pick which one is first. So we won't be waiting around, but I really do feel that we need a CAO in place. And that CAO has to embrace the strategic plan and then implement it. So that's, you know, that's my thought.
Would the CAO, just a question for Julie, sorry, chat.
No, go ahead.
Would the CAO set the strategic plan for three years or does the mayor and council have an influence or a bigger influence on that?
We would set the goals and objectives and the CAO would be the taskmaster. Yes?
When, in my experience, what we did was we got together, like the department heads and council, we got together and did like a workshop and we put the strategic plan, the goals and objectives together. You know, and then of course, yeah, it's the CAO's job to make sure it's moving forward and then it's brought up for review. And yeah, so we did it. We all got together and we did have someone from the government came to help us out. It didn't cost us anything. And I researched that for council to, you know, get that all arranged and figured it out.
Charlie?
I think, I think it's a good, a good idea. Only thing is I would like to kind of know, like what, like how long, like how long the session would they need? What's the timeline? Do they have any suggestions as to what's the best time to do it? Like within your budget, right after you've done your budget so you're ready to move for the next budget line? The, but I mean, I agree because I think always with a good plan, then there's no, or shouldn't say no confusion. A lot of the times then there's not a lack of confusion as to what we all did together because we worked it out for a day or three sessions or four sessions or whatever it is they do. So I'd be, I'd be, I'd be open to more questions as to how long it would take, who would do it, what would entail. And maybe she can, maybe there's, whoever does it would say, well, we need to do this first before we even do the strategic plan. I don't know. Maybe there would be a...
Larry?
No, no, sorry.
Oh, I thought you were going to say something.
No.
Oh, chat.
I'd like to see, like I don't disagree that we do need, definitely need a CAO to implement this stuff, but I'd like to see, even if we were able to do some of the background work and get maybe some more information on what would be required. I'm not saying we would necessarily go ahead with developing a strategic plan right now, but if we were to get some of the background information so we could at least get some of that, some of those hurdles out of the way, I guess. Like maybe sending an email to People's First HR and seeing what their thoughts are on both our situation and how we have been forwarded strategic plan. And if Julie has contacts within the provincial government that provide the service for free, we should be contacting them as well. I just think, I don't want us to, I don't want us to wait till, until we get a CAO and then start to implement this. If we can do some of the background information, you know, save some of the time that may be required. I just at least investigate what our options are. I'm not saying we go ahead with trying to develop and then implement a strategic plan without having a leader at the helm type of thing.
And again, I'm sorry, there's too much water, so I forget things. That thing that we did a year or so ago with that other consultant, was it Ernie?
Yeah.
What was that? I forget.
That was just like a council. Yeah. Although we did that orientation.
But there was a plan. Wasn't there something about...
Didn't they do like a public works or some sort of organizational review and he met with all the managers and said, hey, what do you don't like? What do you like? And what I'm talking, what I look think of strategically is that three years from now, what would be our vision of what the community would look like? And yes, there's capital infrastructure installations that we want and beautification, but what about staff development, cost controls in certain areas being more effective? It's big stuff, right? It's being, try to be visionary. Then we break down the plan into an annual, an annual steps where, you know, this is why it's important now to engage your staff and get your staff involved in saying, yeah, this is what we should be doing. Here's our measurements. Here's our timelines. Who's, here's the champion of this. And have them reporting on those things that are trying to make that end goal three years from now. And what my thoughts are, and you know, Julie, you know, maybe the first step while we go through the CAO process is to get that background stuff going, like who do we contact? How much would it cost? Is there somebody out there to help us? We don't have to start today, but it's something we should also, if we're going to do that, we should spend a few weeks thinking about what we want to talk about when we get there. And this facilitator would be good to help us.
What Mr. F provided us was our roles and responsibilities as counselors. That was the training session that he initially gave us.
Okay, I was thinking of that other one, that plan, that organizational...
That came out. That was about a month later, yes.
Did we do anything with that plan?
Well, I think... We had a bar too. We rented, we need some celebration.
How much did we spend?
$6, $500, $300?
Well, my concern is spending more money without a CAO to help us. That's my concern.
For sure. No, I agree with you. Yeah, I wouldn't want us to go down this path without at least having a plan for where we're going. But if we, if we need to do some of, like Andre said, some of the background work, even if we met as a council and discussed some of these things, you know what I mean? I'm not saying we go through the whole strategic process because...
Or try to execute it.
Yeah, or try to execute it, but yeah. If we can start getting on the same page and...
Okay, forward against. I think everybody said there's peace. People want to do this? Who doesn't want to do this?
Can I just take over?
Yep, sure.
Yeah, again, I don't know if I want it to be, you know, I don't have a, I didn't put forward a solid plan. I think we're all in agreement to have a strategic plan. And maybe, maybe we can just leave this on the table for something to keep talking about and in the interim, have Julie or Jen reaching out to these consultants or this, to find out what they can do to help us sort of thing to get us going. And maybe during this time, you know, it'll be a month from now that we'll have a CAO and we can kind of kick it into high gear and some of the legwork is done for them to get moving. They don't have to do those searches. Where are we going to go?
Okay, so we need to make a decision. Are we going to table this and leave it? Or are we going to proceed with it? Or are we going to shell it? We need to make a decision.
Well, then my suggestion is we create a plan for three years, for our last three years.
Okay, so are people in favor of moving forward with this now? Andre?
I'd like to move forward with the groundwork.
Yep, in camera.
Yes. I think it's going to be to start moving forward then.
Okay.
Once we have a CAO, we can move on quickly, right?
Okay. Now then, so the consensus seems to be to move forward with the groundwork? Carrie, were you going to say something? No, you keep, every now and then I see you. Okay, so then my next question for the gang will be, who do we envision from the town staff doing this groundwork?
Sorry?
My next question is for council, who do we envision from the staff doing this groundwork?
We would kick it back to the Assistant CAO.
Okay.
And make a delegate as executive.
Do you think there's anyone who has time?
I don't know.
Okay.
Yep, I don't know.
And if they don't have time, we'll deal with that?
Yeah, we're going to deal with that.
May I make a suggestion?
Sure.
That possibly council meet just council and find out what our goals and objectives are before we involve somebody else in trying to do work that they may not have the time to do.
So you'd like an in-camera meeting to discuss this?
Well, either an in-camera meeting or...
I mean, session.
Just like a signing session.
I think, I think under the Act, all meetings of...
Or it needs to be announced.
All meetings of council are public meetings. Charlie, did you have something? I thought it's in your hand. I wasn't checking.
Yeah, I did. I was, I was just, again, there's a couple of different things going on here. So if we're going to need to do the strategic plan, then I think it would be helpful if somebody else was there. And it would be, but I, because I don't, I think we're asking for a couple, for two different things. Like I think it would be good just for us to get together with somebody that has some experience doing strategic plans. Not necessarily necessarily they, hey, here you go and run with it with the CEO. That'll probably take time in itself. But I think if we got our, met with somebody and got our stuff together, then by that time we would, we will have a CAO and then we can kind of do, then they can do their strategic plan and we can meet them together. And I'm sure there'd be some, whatever, some things together that'll be, that'll blend or whatever, if that makes any sense. I just, I don't know if that's, I see as two different things. Because we're given the direction anyway at the end of the day. So it's our plan, but I think we need to have someone to guide us along as to what's... I mean, I know the lagoon and the garbage dump are going to be at the forefront, but we're not going to create a list of 500 things on each one of those categories to do because it's, nobody knows what there necessarily has to be done right now.
I don't know if it's allowed, but I mean, I can just contact that People's First HR and ask them to give us a proposal of what it would take to help us create a, and bring it to the next meeting. It should be Julie's. Is that...
It should be Julie asking.
I can do that.
Oh, yeah, no, like I don't know if it's, I just said if everybody's so busy, I could just shoot an email to Julie, but that was fine. Just trying to help.
I have a question. What about a, I don't know if this is possible, what about a strategic planning committee? We have a lot of committees, but what about a strategic planning committee that could move forward on getting some of this information prior to us getting a CAO permanently?
I don't know. Interesting idea? I don't know. Okay. I don't know. That's my best answer I can give. So there, okay, well, we still, again, we need to make a decision, fellows. So we have decided to move forward with the strategic planning idea. We have suggested that the CAO and the Assistant CAO talk to...
Well, that's the one I knew, but whoever, like I don't...
Right? And try to come up with a plan of how we will do it. And then is it fair to say they will get back to us with a response of what it would be? So far?
Yeah.
Okay. Charlie?
And on that note, if they say, well, this doesn't make sense right now because you're doing your budget, well, you know what I mean? I mean, it's good to do one, but maybe there's no pressure to do anything in the next eight months because we're, it's probably naive to think we're going to do our strategic plan at the same time to have a budget all done and it's all going to be together. So, yeah. So just find out when they think that a good time to do one is with relation to all the stuff that we do as well.
Okay. Well, I guess tagging along with that, developments for staff and council.
Yeah, so while in my, like I said, I had a few free minutes and then I got directed to this group here, but I did put forward a proposal to do some staff development. Again, I was thinking around the lines of, you know, just improving staff relations, development of themselves professionally, and just improving effectiveness. So I did, again, I looked at this People's First HR Services and from my understanding is some of this training is free, so I don't know what the costs are or anything like that. And I did suggest to the group here that when you look at the big list that they have here, you know, we look at maybe doing some stuff on effective meetings, interpersonal... So like an effective meeting seminar is a half a day. And yeah, we have meetings all the time, but also staff has meetings and we can make them more effective by creating action decision logs, et cetera. Work on some interpersonal skills and some coaching for leaders, communication skills. And one that I thought would be really good for all of us is the teamwork workshop. And I actually did attend one of these workshops by this fellow in the past and it was very, very, very good. And it was very helpful for me. So I did put the link there that showed all the developments for there in that list. And I don't know what exactly, but I think passing this on to administration and with us in here, if there's something we think we should do, you add all these, oh, and there's one more. There's a two-hour session on respectful workforce, workplace. And I don't know, I don't know if the town actually has a respectful workplace training program, but you, you know. So I thought that would probably be good for everybody as well. I guess what I was, again, more to just get it on the table for discussion and should we move forward with some development for our staff and everyone else in the room?
It's good information to give to Julie to see. Staff development is her decision. The CAO, those are her employees, not ours. As it relates to council, you know, there's probably always room for some improvement. My suggestion right now at this point in time would be to take this information. Everybody good with that?
Yeah.
Okay, I guess that's it. We got a few things for in-camera? Bill?
Bill? No, I'm still reading other stuff here. Result that we do now move into ourselves into the camera portion of the community as a whole with Mayor Jakes and the Chair to discuss matters requiring our attention.